Yep.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to go ahead and have the start this six o'clock meeting. Uh, the Board of Alderman of the City of Brookshire will conduct a special meeting Monday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-one, at six o'clock P M. in the council chambers of the Brookshire Municipal Building located at forty twenty-nine Fifth Street. Um, Ms. Harrison or Mr. Rodney, would one of y'all call the, call us to do the roll call, please?
Mayor Branch?
Here.
Alderman Branch?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Green?
Present.
Alderman Stedt?
Present.
Alderman Green?
Matt Bulting.
Matt Green?
Green.
Jones.
Jones.
Jones outside.
Jones. Okay. Um, next item on this agenda is a prayer. Would anyone like to give us a prayer this afternoon?
Rodney Wood.
We value that you're having a Father's Thanksgiving for this assembly tonight to do your work to improve the city and surrounding areas to develop and keep everything in order in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Branch?
Good afternoon, students. To the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Uh, agenda item number three is public comments. I have the sheet here, no one has signed in to speak. Is there anyone would like to speak? Take this note. We'll move on to discussion number four, discussion and possible action regarding amending the city's development standards and related regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Waiting for the screen.
We're working, we're gonna try to email the document to Pete so we can get it, because I think that cord's messed up.
So, uh, the purpose of this workshop is to, um, kind of give you a brief on, um, explanation on some of the changes that, uh, are being proposed. Um, as I mentioned last time, uh, we had gone through this, these briefly, very briefly at our last meeting, and at that time, the thought was that it would be beneficial to go over them in detail. Um, so, um, the city had asked us to look at two areas of concern. One was the adjacency issues, uh, to protect residential from, uh, commercial, and then the other one was to look at higher standards along the corridors. Um, so, we're gonna focus on that and, uh, just, uh, so we can do it either way, either just, um, you know, talk about the adjacency issues at this workshop if we run out of time, and then talk about the corridor standards next time. Uh, but the thought was not to really, um, you know, uh, the expectation is not that you would have too many comments, the purpose was just to explain to you that you, you would have time to go back and look at it, and then maybe come back at the next workshop with questions. But we can do it whichever way works for you. Um, so, I'll just go over them briefly, and if you wanna interrupt and, or save your questions for the end, that's fine too, but I'll basically, um, conduct the workshop like you would wanna see it. So, um, like I said, the two recommendations, so, um, one was the adjacent, adjacency issues, and then the second one was the development standard. So, um, I think the reason, uh, like we discussed last time, why this is important is that we do have a lot of vacant land, um, that has development potential, and also the air, the city and the area, surrounding area is facing a lot of growth. Uh, the population projections are expected to, um, increase almost, um, almost twenty percent by, um, twenty thirty-five, and, um, I think it's, uh, all the more re, why it's important is Brookshire doesn't have zoning regulations, so in other cities, some of this would be covered in their zoning regulations. And, um, what we have recommended is, um, basically what we have seen in our experience is that other cities are already implementing, so, uh, this is not, um, this is not new to developers who come to the city, they, they do see these standards in other cities. Um, and something.
Just send me this one again, I'll, I'll draw for you. Go to the next page or scroll.
Yeah, next page, yeah. So, um, the first set of standards, like I said, are based on adjacency, so we saw this diagram last time, and, um, so some of the standards that, um, are, um, addressed include height restrictions, fencing, buffers, landscaping, and just minimum, um, setback requirements. So, um, can you just go to the next paragraph there?
I can do it for you, you don't have to.
You, I can just stand there, why don't I do that?
Okay, do that.
So it's easier. That's perfect.
Up and down for the arrow.
Okay, yeah. So, um, one of the things that's important to note is especially for the, um, corridor standards, um, we refer back to the thoroughfare plan that we discussed because it's identit, it was important to identify what corridors are important, and that was based on the thoroughfares, collectors, um, and the freeway tollway. And these streets are identified in the thoroughfare plan, so all this cross references to the plan, and that's why I've attached a copy of the proposed thoroughfare plan so that it's, um, clear. And the, the way this, uh, memo is written is, if you see red text, typically that highlights what information is missing or what are the issues that have been identified, and anything that's underlined, um, indicates recommendations that would be added on, and then strikeouts just indicate delusions. And so the process, uh, would be typically to have this workshop, then have you all go and, you know, look at some of the recommendations, um, and come back with your suggestions, and then, um, if, uh, with that, with your input, we would move forward and change the actual language in the code as it's written, and then work with Justin and have him, uh, do his, um, gi- give it a legal overview and make sure that legally it's sound, and then bring it back for, um, adoption or amendment to the codes, and that process, it would be a public hearing process, and we would advertise it and then have the public hearing, and then once the, once you all adopt those development regulations, then they would go into effect. So, um, right now, really, this is a work session, and, um, just going and making sure that you all, um, agree with some of the recommendations, or if you have anything else, we can look at that. So, if you look at, um, wh- what is there now, so you, so what you see, when you look at the uses, we looked at, um, single-family, multifamily, retail, commercial, industrial, and the second column there is the existing height restriction that you have. So, for example, the height restriction for single-family residential use is eighty feet, multifamily's eighty, retail, commercial is eighty, industrial is eighty. So, people can actually build these tall buildings, um, with minimum setbacks, and so the issue is that especially allowing eighty feet for single-family residential, what that does is the existing residential that's already there, typically, single-family residential is two stories, you know, when you have one house on a lot, and the height restriction that you see in other cities is thirty-five feet, and that allows you to have a two-story and a pitched roof, and cities start from there. And if, if somebody does need any additional height, um, say somebody's building a huge mansion, and they feel that it needs to be larger, they can go to the council and get a conditional use permit to make it larger, but since that involves a public hearing process, everybody around is notified, and if people feel that additional height is intrusive, then they will, um, voice their concern. So, so that's one thing, I think that is important to look at, to see if this eighty-foot that is permitted should be made lower. Same thing with multifamily, again, um, eighty-foot, uh, eighty-foot, um, height would allow a seven-story building, really, and so, um, and because there's no zoning, this is permitted anywhere, and so that is a concern, again, the thought is to, um, um...
No, I think it's, I'm not sure.
So, so even with, um, multi-story, the thought is, um, typically, again, cities will start at a height that's compatible with other, um, residential and uses around, so start with thirty-five, and understanding that multifamily would need additional height, they would either allow it through a special exception, or through some kind of a step setback where for every ten feet the building is higher, the setback is larger, and that's the diagram that is included in your packet on the, on the page before this. Um, same thing with retail and commercial, again, um, eighty foot, eighty foot is tall, especially if this is located right next to a single-family residential, so you have people living in hotels and motels and on a four-story, six-story, looking over somebody else's backyard, that is not, that does not protect your residential uses, so same thing looking at, um, shorter heights. Um, so all of these, industrial is the same thing, so starting off with something that is by right permitted at a much lower height, and then allowing additional if needed through some more scrutiny and make it more, um, site-specific. Um, there is no, um, height restriction for junkyards, and again, um, typically, um, if there is an office building limiting it to thirty-five feet, and, um, cities will say that you don't want things stored in your junkyard that's not more than six feet or ten feet or something like that, so that you don't have a lot of, um, stuff that looks unsightly. A manufactured home subdivision, there is a thirty-five-foot restriction, and the thought is to retain that, and same thing with the RV park, so, so this is where the adjacency standards start, starting with the height restriction. Um, so the next thing was, um, looking at fencing requirements. Um, again, there is no restriction or requirement for fencing that's put in the front yard, and so what happens is right now, people can put any type of fences in the front yard that could be detrimental to neighborhood, so what you would see generally is, um, in cities will restrict fences in the front yard or limit those fences to very specific decorative fences like wrought iron, or if a city is rural, they want picket fences, they will put that, and also limit the height to five feet, because you don't want fences on both sides of the street that are eight feet tall and create this corridor, which is...
I swear we upgraded that fencing ordinance in twenty nineteen.
I thought we did too.
With it to say, no more than four feet in the front and eight feet to the sides.
Yeah, and if it's there, then I'll have to look back and see, because, um, I'll have to find that old instant. Okay, yeah, so, yeah.
Is that a true and correct statement?
Okay.
I'll go get it if you want.
No, that's okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, that's good, that's good to know then. We will just incorporate that, and four feet in the front and decorative fencing.
Yes.
Some are not codified.
And...
So some of these changes are not codified, so, yeah, we'll, we'll re- review that, yeah. And if it's, if it needs any additional, uh, approval, we'll make sure we come back and get that. And again, limiting chain link, woven wire, um, concertina wire, and things like that, just making sure that that's not permitted. And same thing with side yard, um, again, typically, six-foot minimum, eight-foot maximum, and we'll go back and check and see we have the latest, um, adopted version. Then, non-residential, um, right now, it says if it's commercial, located adjacent or adjoining to an existing residential, uh, the height has to be, uh, the height is limited to six-foot tall, um, solid, it's a solid fence, it says wall or other similar screening device, and so this is a requirement, this is good, it, it's already there in the code. Um, the only thing we were gonna, uh, recommend is adding some more guidance on the type of material, when you say six-foot solid fence, typically, cities, when it's residential and non-residential, um, buffering, they will require a masonry fence, so that it's, um, it's a little nicer, it's, it lasts longer, um, and that's something, um, we have recommended, again, you, you all can look at it, minimum six-foot tall, um, maximum eight feet, masonry or reinforced concrete, and making sure that it is hundred percent opaque, because, uh, sometimes the uses in the non-residential might be, um, might affect the resident, residential. For example, if there's a drive-through window on the other side, and people are driving at night, then they have their, the lights that shine into the yards, and it's, it's a big problem for people living there, so that's why it's important to have that right kind of buffer. Again, restricting, yeah.
I have a question. Um, a corner lot with a six-foot fence that's probably maybe four feet from the actual street, and I've, I've encountered this problem here, and you drive to the corner, and you literally have to pull out into the street just to see oncoming traffic.
Right.
How, how do you, how do you deal with that?
For a corner lot, typically, this, um, the sides that front the streets are considered front yards for fencing purposes, just to avoid that, and also, there is a visibility triangle that is put in the code where it specifically says that, um, in that triangle, you know, at the corner, um, twenty-five feet on either side, anything that's there should be less than four feet, or there should not be an obstruction between two and a half feet and eight feet, because when you're sitting in the car, that is your vision. So, uh, we can make sure that we incorporate that, but that is a big safety issue.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
I lost it on my screen, too. Okay, Pete. Thank you. Yeah, um... Um, then, um, going back to setbacks, and you can see there's a lot of strikeouts and additions, so there are two sections in the code, um, chapter forty-eight of the code talks about yards, and then also, chapter fifty talks about building lines, so really, a building line is a yard, and, um, the front yard is defined as the, um, the area between the front building line and the front property line or the right-of-way line. So, um, so there's a, it just appears, it, it makes it very confusing to have two chapters that basically talk about the same thing but have different requirements, so this is kind of cleaning it up, so if you can see, under chapter forty-eight, um, the setback standards, uh, were twenty-five for minor streets and twenty-five for major streets, and it wasn't clear what is a minor street and what is a major street. So what we really did is, and this is where, um, since it was based on street classification, we went back to the thoroughfare plan that was submitted and used those classifications, so there is consistency, the entire code is, will basically use those classifications when standards are relative to the street. So if you have a, a, a property that's abutting a thoroughfare or a collector or a freeway, then the frontier, um, the yard requirement would be thirty-five feet, but if it's just a local street, which is called a general street there, then it would be twenty-five feet. So a lot of this is just cleanup, but at the end of the day, really, you're looking at thirty-five-foot, um, front yard for properties that do, um, face more heavily traveled streets, and then for local streets, twenty-five, for rear yards, again, um, if the rear of the property does abut a street, then it's technically, like I said, it's not a rear yard, it's, it's a yard that's seen from the street, so it's really a front yard, so it's treated similar, and then, um, but if it's just, um, rear, then it's a little lower, and then, um, there, there was some, um, requirements for alleyways, and I think that's, your code, um, has adopted some forum-based code, so if there is an alleyway, then there, the requirements are a little different, so we basically didn't make any changes to that, because I wasn't sure where that was coming from.
In the past, we've had a problem of, one minute it's called an alleyway, and the next minute it's called a city easement, and we need to clarify.
Okay.
I mean, this has been an ongoing problem for years. We, right now, still have a property that has a fence that's in the city easement, but it's been classified on a map as a...
Alleyway.
It's a city easement, but it's classified on the map as an alleyway.
Uh, which map are you referring to?
By their plat or something like that.
On the plat, maybe?
Yes.
So what, what makes, what's the difference between a utility easement and a city alleyway?
So, city alleyway is typically a public, public right-of-way, so when these plats, like historically, when they were planted, uh, if you look at all the historic cities, there was an alleyway at the back that provided access for garbage collection, and a lot of cities still have it, like Dallas area cities, and even Lubbock used to have it, where, um, you use the alleyway to, and, and to enter the garage at the back, or you put your dumpsters there, or just, you know, um, so that the street is left nice and clear, and you don't see dumpsters and garages facing the street. So it was how those cities were designed, like I said, I just haven't done enough research to see that if historically there were any alleyways planted in Brookshire.
So, so one difference is that it depends on the plat dedication and what language is used for that whatever parcel, but an alleyway dedication would be something for that, so technically, you can use an alleyway dedication for public purposes, depending on how it was listed in the plat, but a utility easement, so the alleyway isn't be above the ground, utility easement would be either be, most of the time, below, below surface, so sewer, you know, underground utility easement is probably how it would be labeled, or it could be, and this, this wouldn't be a city thing, but it would be, a private entity would probably do overhead utilities, would be electric lines. So a lot of, what you'll see is, a lot of times, there's a way overlaid, and like I know in Lubbock, that's the way they did it, um, sewer easements in that, were in the alley, so there's an alley dedication for those purposes, for trash collection and, and I think meter reading from, from the city, but then also, underground utility easements were placed there for, just for ease, because you already have an open space, and so it so if you got a busted pipe, you don't have to go to the street to tear it up, you're going to the alleyway to tear it up, and then, and then also, for certain aesthetic reasons, electrical lines run through the alley, so that way, they're not in the street, they're in the alley, and that's so, a lot of times, you're gonna see overlaid stuff, so in that particular case, again, we have to look at the plat on it and see, but my, my guess would be that you have, you probably have both there, you probably have an, an alley dedicated, and then you have some kind of easement, either, either private easement or a public easement. Yeah.
But you know what property that...
Yes, and that, and that's, that's been an ongoing issue, and...
It still is.
Yeah, and we don't know really what to classify that as, is a utility easement or an alleyway. My mom's house has a easement in the back of the property, and growing up, we all just said it was a city alley, but knowing what I know now, there's not a city alley, that's a utility easement behind her property, but you can't say the same for every piece of property in the city. So I think Ms. Branch is asking, how do we get clarity on... It's really gotta map it out, and you gotta go plat by plat and see what's there, and generally, you're probably gonna find, if, if there really is an alley, that's when it wa- whenever it was subdivided, that's when it would've been dedicated. So you're gonna see that affect, I mean, it depends on how many parcels came out of that one area, but you're gonna see that thing, at least for, you know, say there's four houses on each street, so there's an alley in between all of them, you're gonna see that affect eight different properties. Or, may more or less, depending on how you're gonna see it, but then the utility easement, if it's, if it's a city utility easement, then we should see that too, because there's, that's gonna be kinda dedicated in the same way. If it's a private utility easement, what you're, we're gonna have to look at then, and again, depends on what's on, on file, is what the purpose of that utility easement's for, if there's something, but if you're talking, there's a, a fence, a lot of times can be constructed over e- both of those things, but it's just gonna be subject to the person that is building the, the thing, to know that those easements in the alley take precedent over that fence, and that's why you're gonna see a lot of times, so, so and again, the best case would be something, if somebody put a fence in, in an alley that also has an underground utility easement and a pipe bust, you know, and it's, and we know it's a major, it's a major line problem in the alley, that means you gotta get, say if the city was doing that, the city would come in, we'd dig up everything, if that fence is in the way, that fence is going down, because we gotta get to that thing that's underground. If, but you're gonna have problems a lot of times if, again, like a lot, some of these plats are so old, they're not clear, and then you even have instances where people have built homes or garage over, over an easement, unknowing that they're doing that, you know? Um, and that's, it's a problem for the homeowner or the property owner or whatever it is, because that, that thing is still subject, more than likely, again, we have to look at all the details on it, but more than likely, that's subject to the easement, and the thing that's getting, that's underground, in that case, that, that structure's gotta go, because you gotta get access to what's un- underneath the ground. So you have to do like a, uh, a search on all the old, really, really old plats? Yeah.
The, this plat would show it, though.
Because, yeah, that's right, so it's, it depends on how old that plat is, if it's been updated, then it should reflect that, but... Because I, I own a piece of property that's pretty, off of First Street, that goes way back up in there, in this, when I did the search on it, I received a, a email with a hand sketch plat, that's how old it is, and in the very back of it, it was a utility easement for H L and P, H L and P's not even around anymore. But that's dead back, in the very back piece of that property is a H L and P utility.
Well, you know, we had the same issue by Smith's Funeral Home, they wanted to put a parking lot, um, handicap parking space, the City of Brookshire, it's our city easement.
Yeah.
And the Water District told the city that owns the easement that we couldn't let them put it there because of the water line. We can let them put it there, and it was wrote in the contract that if the water line broke, that Smith Funeral Home would be responsible for it, but, uh, Water District still blocked those people, and that's why it hasn't been done.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of issues with...
We need real clarity on this issue right here.
So, this refers to just the setbacks, right, and I think the way, um, so when somebody comes to plat, they would have a survey or a plat, and typically, I mean, the survey will identify all this. Um, if, if, if they show any kind of an alleyway, then these, um, regulations will apply, if they don't, then they just kind of revert back to what is your regular standard rear yard requirement. So the way this is written is if you do have the twenty-foot alley, and again, this is existing, no changes have been proposed, the setback goes back to, uh, goes down to five feet, so, so I think the assumption there is the, the building would still be, uh, half of the alleyways ten feet and five on each side, so the building still, would still meet the fifteen-foot rear setback, so that is the purpose, so it's not gonna affect the setbacks in that manner, but for other purposes, yes, what can you do on the alleyway, that's a different, um, that'll raise a whole different set of questions.
What, what, let's just say thirty-three oh six, Sixth Street, and, and the fence is in the city easement, could we make those, that citizen m- move their fence because of the city easement, or would they holler that they were grandfathered in before we, uh, redone the...
So it would depend on what the easement allows, like some easements, the way they're written, they do allow fences, but they'll say if the utility company needs to come in and do some repairs and tear the fence out, then they're not, um, gonna be liable or responsible to replace it, and so, um, it would all depend, but I know that a lot of cities have the same issues, people encroach on easements all the time, and it's very hard to enforce this unless it becomes an issue, and at that time, the, the thing with the easement is, the easement is just the strip, which is not owned by the, the person who holds, um, title to the easement, the lane doesn't belong to them, the lane... the person who holds um title to the easement, the land doesn't belong to them, the land owner is somebody different, right? The easement owner is not the land owner, the the easement owner just has rights to use the land. So that's always an issue, so if some if the land owner encroaches on an easement, if the person who has the easement or the company has to come and do something, they're they're not gonna repay or repair anything. So the owner takes that risk and responsibility. And people let it go because the easement is sitting there doing nothing, if somebody wants to use it, let them, knowing that if there is a problem in the future, they'll be uh the uh the easement holder is not gonna come and repair. So it's just one of those things that it's just all over the place, and if you start trying to fix it, you'll find that every property will have an issue, and I say that because drainage easements are the worst. Uh like, you know, we were talking about, we are having some drainage issues now in Brookshire, again, it's not uh common. All of these lots have a three foot drainage easement on the common lot line, which is supposed to be clear and graded down, that's how the water from the back of the yard is gonna go to the front. And I will guarantee you, including my house, there's landscaping, there's this, so um it it's it's just one of those things, when there is an issue, yes, I can, you know, go hire a lawyer and go against my neighbor and say, because you're causing that easement to be blocked, I am having flooding, but it's not something that the cities typically get involved in because it's it is very complicated, correct me if I'm wrong.
And so that's where it's that's why we gotta go through each one and find out if it's if it's a city easement or if it's an I've been dedicated to the city as an alley. Those are similar, but they're different but similar, but we if and if we're having an issue with the functions of either of those things, like our access to alleys, whatever we're doing for the purpose of that dedication, or for the easement, whatever the purpose of the easement stated in that document is, if we're not being able to do either of those things, since the city not being able to do it, then we need to see how to correct that issue, you know. And again, if it's in this case, if it's a fence blocking, if it's an alley and there's a fence in the way, if we can't get through the alley, then we need to get that fence adjusted so that we can have access to the alley. Same thing with the underground easement, if we have stuff that we can't access, something underground that we need to get to, then we gotta do something about it.
Yeah, good luck with that one.
So yeah, so for for the purpose of like separation and buffer, we're just looking at the setbacks and making sure that it's not an issue, so. And then um one thing we do did recommend is um which is right now, the side yard setback, um if it's an interior lot, um it's seven and a half feet. And just based on the plats that we are and the issues that we are dealing with in Brookshire and other um cities, we had a meeting with the Water District and the Drainage District and um they are seeing a lot where with this um actually, the currently it's five feet side yard, and what they're seeing is when people start draining and grading their lots and because of the new, I don't know, FEMA regulations, the 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 first floor elevation is much higher. And all of a sudden, you have a five foot lot where the end of the and the edge of the lot is at, say, zero, and the house has been raised almost three to four feet, that that slope is a real problem uh in terms of drainage, and then the water has nowhere to go but into the neighbor's yard, because it's not the five foot is not large enough to have any kind of swell. So um the recommendation, if if something you wanna consider is increase it to at least seven and a half feet. Because what happens is um in that five feet, sometimes you have your transformer, your electric box, and all that are obstructions. So uh I I do know that some cities are going into seven and a half feet just because of drainage and grading issues. These lots are too small, you you know, fifty foot lots are allowed in Brookshire, um and and really the lots are, the size of the lot, if you don't have larger setbacks, um it's very hard to grade it with the current standards. It's just things have changed over time and you know flooding is a big issue, so um just something to consider. So if you you see that that five foot has been crossed off and we are recommending seven and a half feet. And that that also forces your lots to be a little wider and not just cramped, so it's something to think about. Uh and then patio homes, of course, patio homes are typically, the way they're designed is they have zero lot line on one side, but the other side you have ten feet, so uh it's just a different style, but you'll still end up with at least ten feet between the buildings. And similar setbacks as um single family homes. And then um currently um town for townhomes, um the second set of regulations doesn't address them, so what we did was just basically took what you have and then um use the same guidelines, twenty five foot rear yard, twenty five foot front yard, and then twenty foot along all streets, but if, of course, townhomes, they have zero, they're attached, so you wouldn't have an interior side yard. But also um limit, and it's a fire code too, that you typically don't have eight units in a block because it gets too dense and then you have to start wor- worrying about fire separation, so can have eight units in the block and then the minimum distance between the blocks would be twenty feet. So again, those are some standard requirements, which is missing in the code right now. Um manufactured home lot, um the second um section did not have it, so with manufactured home, really, i- it is basically a single family house, right? So uh we just went with the single family regulations. I I don't think that unless it's in a in a planned development or something like that, that there is um a need to reduce the setback requirements.
Because you know, our code only says manufactured homes inside of a a mobile home park, we don't allow.
So, right, so this would kind of apply to any nonconforming situation, uh which would just make it conforming to what other houses around look like, so. And then multifamily, um so multifamily really, uh twenty five foot along, um you know, again, this is minor, major, we are gonna change that to thoroughfare, I missed that. But again, something to consider, if single family setback is twenty five feet, would you like to see a higher setback for multifamily? Along your front, along your major streets at least, so that they're not right up to the uh up to the street. Uh i- if you do that, something can be easily changed, maybe look at thirty five or more, so that you have more green space. And then commercial, um again, um just uh going back to chapter forty eight requirements of this columns, the second, third and fourth columns, just using those, twenty five foot for minor streets, twenty five feet for major and secondary, and as you said, major and secondary would be your thoroughfares, collectors and freebies, so kind of um change that and um and just not not too many changes here. Uh I think this 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 is something that's pretty standard. And then um so um again, there was a little bit of confusion, this this said commercial, retail, industrial, and then the next uh in chapter fifty building lines, you have just commercials, so uh the thought was maybe just get rid of the first set of regulations and just stick to uh what is what you see here and apply it to just all kinds of non-residential. So again, goes back to, this is where you see a larger setback along the thoroughfares and collectors, thirty five feet and in the front yard. Um so um fifteen feet, um if it's facing the if it's facing the feet and fee uh street and it's not the front or the rear fifteen feet, and then internal um setbacks would be the twenty five or um thirty, so the alleyway so shows up here too and again, um we'll go back and see where exactly, if if there is any more light on what they mean by this alleyway. But uh just keeping it so that the distance between the building is are still maintained and it's not congested. And um then junkyards, um it's not addressed here, but so we addressed it in the junkyard section later that I can discuss it. And then a manufactured home subdivision lot, again, making sure that um if it's twenty five feet in the front, it's twenty five in the rear and ten, so again, uh especially if it's located next to residential, you wanna have a larger setback, so. Just added that in, and then you see the man- for a manufactured home park, like you mentioned, just twenty five feet on all 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 sides, so. RV park, um there were no requirements, so we are gonna look into this a little bit more and basic, um if you don't find anything, probably just go back to a manufactured home park with twenty five foot on all sides.
We just redone uh RV park uh ordinance uh properly, a- actually, I think I might have noticed it in our packet um for the meeting later on, because we wanted wider lot spaces as well as that, and we just rewrote that ordinance, I believe, in twenty nineteen.
We we looked at, there was a, it it wasn't clearly written, and there was a certain standard that wasn't two things were issued, one was it wasn't industry standard, apparently from what we heard from folks, but then even the standards we have, there was a I think it was a typographical deal, but it mentioned it wrote out, like we had like, I can't remember, thirty five or something like that feet, but then in the brackets for the number, it was sixty or something, so there was that issue. And so we made we made that come into conformance with whatever the industry standard was, but.
Okay, so typically, what what we have written is um, you know, just on the setback, but really, how is that setback treated? Adding more landscape buffers along the streets and making sure, especially when it abuts residential and other uses, that there is larger distance, but I think even when you drive by the street, you know, how does it look like? And does it have a nice sign, do you have, you know, shrubbery and tree uh trees along the street to kind of visually buffer it also and um things like that, so yeah, we can look into that and um.
I don't think there was a, we also in that had where it wouldn't be where somebody could come and live there if if had a.
And I think one other deal was the request we had at the time was uh pull through spaces versus, you know, back in only, I think, I think I think ours is pull through only, I think that's right, so.
Then the other thing that we also saw in the nicer parks is again, masonry fencing requirements, and also making sure that each RV park space had a couple of additional vehicular car parking, because they all do have cars and there is no room for these cars. And then also making sure that um each space had a couple of trees, I mean, there's no reason why it should not be green, so just making it a little bit more livable and better quality, so landscaping was a big.
That is one thing, one of one of the proposed RV parks, I mean, part of what he was presenting was showing that if he followed your code, besides the lot size, that he didn't have to do any landscaping, so it was essentially just like cement land, and so and so that's what we.
Right, right, and yeah, and yeah, so we can research that and.
You're taking notes right, Tim.
I mean, you uh uh I don't know about here, but some of the RVs that were parked in other cities that we looked into, the RV was over a million dollars, I'm not kidding. And I'm like, okay, and those parks are nice, you know, and then so, uh I mean, there's no reason why it shouldn't be a good quality RV park, so. And oh, the paving was another deal, some of the parks did not require paving, um all purpose, um concrete or asphalt. So what you had was they would gravel it and then over the years you would have potholes and water, standing water and mosquitoes and just, you know, stuff like that, that kind of made it unsightly for the city as well as the neighbors. And then um so so that was all setbacks, then we talked about screening requirements, right? And it's really, really important to start looking at this, and one thing is typically these the dumpsters that you see are commercial dumpsters, they're not, I mean, of course, they're not single family, so uh most of the commercial establishments um are willing to do this, um because like I said, every other community, every other state requires them to, so start, uh so you do have some requirements now that if it's in the um the dumpster needs to have a six foot solid fence or wall or similar, and what what we are proposing is um take the or option and give them some more prescriptive guidelines, you know, have a masonry fence, uh it needs to be opaque, how tall is it? Or if you do wanna give them the um wooden fence option, make sure that there is landscaping around that kind of makes it a little bit more um nicer, and then um the thing with the standards is just saying a wooden fence with landscaping is not enough, it's important to say you wanna have um the the landscape strip should be, how wide should it be, how tall should the planting be, and what is the spacing? Otherwise, um you know, cities that don't have these requirements will get like little shrubs that really don't do anything. And and the developers like these guidelines because they know exactly what the city is looking for. So um these have been pretty successful in other cities. And then the other type of screening is when there is a non-residential use that's next to an existing residential use, now if you had zoning, it would say to an existing zone, but it doesn't matter, here it's just the use right now. So um so whenever there is a a a a non-residential, like commercial, retail establishment goes up next to an existing residential, um requiring a la- a fif- a twenty five foot landscape buffer with trees and shrubs, and then um having again, requirements on how what the spacing should be. So this kind of goes back to the diagram in the packet that kind of, those are some of the requirements that need to be in the code to get those desired results. And then same thing with manufactured home subdivisions um um all along the park boundaries, adding more buffer requirements with the width of the buffer, what type of trees, what type of shrubs, and the spacing requirement. And so those are just pictures that illustrate what these regulations result in. And I I will tell you that when you see these dumpster enclosures looking like this, a lot of times those cities are the ones that are making them do it, so.
We do have that in a city ordinance, that they're all supposed to be completely covered, uh even with the fence, I know that.
So un- unless there is a change to the ordinance, I think right now it says six foot solid fence or wall or similar. And so what we are saying is make it a little bit more clearer, it I I would not, I would recommend a masonry wall. Because a fence could be anything.
I can tell you, a a lot of our problem is that when we enclose the front, I don't know how to say this politely. The trash company, people don't wanna get out and unlock the front gates to empty the dumpsters, so now we end up with, you know, falling off front gates and or we have no front gates at all.
So um and that, I I have been in those situations, that's where, you know, code enforcement is so important, but it's also the agreement that you have with the with these companies. Um you know, there was a um argument made that they're not going in the backyards and this this refuse collection company wanted all the dumpsters to be located in the front yard so that they could just pick up from the street. I mean, it doesn't matter what they want, right, that was not at all good for the city, and you know what these dumpsters look like sometimes. So it's just working with those co- companies and um they do it in other cities, so I don't know, you know, so I just working with them and coming into some kind of agreement, but we also did was we made sure that these they saw our requirements, so that there was enough space for them to go in and, you know, pull out. But I I that argument I have heard, but I but you know, it's just like I said, in my experience, most of the other municipalities will require it. So you might have to just work with your, right, waste management.
And we've done that with with the public before, we just need to make a li- if that's still happening, then we need to make a list and send it to them and 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 go through the.
It's still happening.
Let's make a list about it and we need to send it to them.
Yeah, because that's not a good excuse. And then again, looking at landscaping standards, uh what we found that um just again, the the requirements are there, but they're um they just lack some details and um the unless there is an amendment, now the section that's there now, it really specifically says applies to only single family development. And I don't know if you have found anything else, we did, and so that was a. And so that was a little bit concerning because as it stands now, there are no landscaping requirements for non-residential development. Um so that, that definitely is something that we would recommend be clarified. And um so the additions that you see, um just some examples, will um add requirements for all developments. Uh again, the other important thing is when it's an existing situation, like non-conforming, a building doesn't have any landscaping, and then you adopt these landscaping requirements, they become non-conforming because they, they were okay when they were built. Um a lot of cities will say that these landscaping requirements definitely will apply to all new development, but for ex- for expansions, um they say, yes, if you expand your building, this will, you will have to go back and clean up and, you know, make sure landscaping conforms. Sometimes they will have triggers like expansion of over hundred feet or twenty-five percent or something like that. But then, um and then if it's a non-conforming situation, and for some reason they cannot meet their new requirements, there is a process for them to come back to the board and get some concessions. But that also allows the board then to look and see, can they kind of make up in some other areas? So I understand that you're, you cannot put a twenty-five-foot buffer, but if it's just a ten-foot buffer, can you put in additional shrubs so that the intent of the code is met? So, so those are the three areas that it's important to address because otherwise it leads to a lot of confusion on what happens when people are expanding and, and something is um existing con- uh non-conforming. And so that, then, and making sure that the planting details include the quantity and size of all landscaping. For example, shrubs, there is def- a gallon, uh, a, a size of the root ball requirement. Trees are measured typically in caliper inches. Minimum industry standard is starting with two-inch caliper trees. And um so making sure some of those things are there. And then um the other thing that is very common is adding a minimum percentage of landscape area. So if it's a commercial development, typically the codes say ten to twenty percent should be landscaped. That way, you're not covering your entire property with concrete and putting a com- parking lot there. Um then buffer requirements, we talked about, if you're but residential, you need more landscaping. And then installation standards, um again, we, this, this happened in Brookshire a few weeks back when um a, a certificate of occupancy was sent back because the um landscaping wasn't there. Your residential requirements do require trees and shrubs. So then the applicant came back and showed a picture where they had just taken the lawn, dug a little bit of hole, and planted a shrub this big. And e- everybody knows that that doesn't meet the intent, and it's not going to grow. But unfortunately, we didn't have minimum standards, so it was hard to kind of send that back. But we did say, you know, let's go back to the American Association of, there's an American Nursery Association that has standards to kind of go back. But it's important to have those things written down so that, that people know what the expectation is. And like I said, the minimum shrub size is generally five gallons. And just so, just adding some of those requirements so that um, you know, it's, it's good for staff to know what they're enforcing. So just uh, so the requirements, like I said, includes the spacing, then the caliper inches. Um so, so typically, the landscaping requirements include the type of landscaping you would provide along the street, so with street skips and shrubs to screen your parking lots. And then um parking lot requirements, like you said, you don't want a whole sea of asphalt. So um they will say that you, you would have, you know, so many caliper inches of trees for so many parking spaces. That's also very common. And then ground cover, how much of the site is going to be um uh left as landscape? Another big thing that I really need, thing needs to be fixed in Brookshire is a lot of homes are coming for certificate of occupancy, and um they're not sodding the lot, um the lot is not covered, it's just left mud. And what they're doing, and I don't know where they're getting the requirements, is especially the GLA homes, they're taking a two-fit, two-foot-wide turf and just putting it on both sides of the driveway. The rest of the lot is left mud. And unfortunately, we were not, we've been using some of the industry standards and sending it back, saying, it's not fair on the property owner because the erosion control is going to happen, there's going to be potholes in that ground, water, mosquitoes, and all that silt is going to fo- go into your city streets. So, and I know we have been working together, and thank you for your help, but we are sending these things back, saying, there is no reason why these houses shouldn't be buttoned up.
No, we started saying adding the IDC requirements.
And we did find those requirements in the International Building Code that the city has adopted.
We have adopted.
And so we, we, something they like to stand on, right? Sometimes it's, we, we don't just want to tell people to do the right thing if it's not codified. But I think that's really important, and especially if these are GLA homes. I'll say it, hey, they're being paid by somebody to do the right thing, and there's no reason why citizens of Brookshire should get substandard anything. And then what bothers me is the same contractors will do the right thing in other cities because they know other cities won't let it. And I've said it in public, but I just feel so strongly about it. So I think the regulations need to be in place, and they have to be enforced. So um, so, so we're just planning to add some of those things.
So about time.
Okay. So I think I'm going to stop here because this kind of ends all the, uh, the last thing was just adding percentage of landscape requirement um for each type of development. So this is just if you have residential, fifteen percent of the lot is going to be landscaped and things like that. So um then, I can stop here because signage is another big deal. Um and we have, we have a matrix here that kind of looked at different type of signs and what, what the requirements that are missing. The requirements would generally be area setback and things like that. So we can, we can do that, and then we can jump into corridor development standards if that, if, if that's what you want to see. If there's another format, we'll be happy to work with you on that, so.
There's those two ordinance.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
It was in this week's packet, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, yeah. Any, any questions or move on or just in, you have one minute?
One minute. I mean, I think the, and ideas, we do another one of these, maybe the next council meeting one after that, just have, as you go through this packet, you've seen us been presented other ideas that you have, that you want to raise, any other issues you see. And then we can work through that, have a portion of the next meeting to do those comments, and then get into the second part, which is the signage, and then the, I guess, the rest of it, the corridor development standards, and move on from there.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm ready, my dear.
Um, agenda item number five adjournment.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Hmm, good writing. Okay, uh, Mr. Stamps. The green.
Four.
I seconded it.
I know.
Okay, because you looked.
I'm doing.
You looked over your life.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
We have a two-minute.
Sure.